Good evening, I would like to call the Thursday, October 13th, 2016, regular meeting of the Dune City Council to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilor President Maury Sanders.
Here.
Counselor Ed Scarborough.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon Meyer.
Present.
Counselor Duke Wells.
Here.
Counselor Ken Platt, welcome back. Yay, kids back. And for the record, Mayor Rea is absent and excused. Did I miss him or anything? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Tom, I forgot. Councilman Tom Mallon is on the phone.
The entire council is present with the exception of the mayor who's absent, we keep the excuse. I'd like to ask everyone to rise from the pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, will never be inadmissible for all. There's no changes, or additions, or corrections to the agenda. I've been asked for a motion to approve the agenda. It's been moved. Motion's been moved, is there a second? There was a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. Consent agenda. Is there any discussion, any items we need to pull from this, or do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I know approval is presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Call a question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Announcements and correspondence. Birthday wishes to Councilmember Sheldon Meyer on October 21st.
Correct.
And if he tells you how old he is, don't believe him. Happy birthday, Sheldon Meyer. Also, Sayuslan News, I'll take this moment to ask Allen if you can swing the camera on Mr. Mark Brennan, he's the new community reporter for the Sayuslan News, covering Dune City Council and different things in the community itself, so put the face with the name, his name is Mark Brennan, we're welcome, we welcome the gentleman out here.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Is there any citizen requesting to provide input to tonight's meeting? Is anyone signed up? One second. And then we'll move on to new business, schedule the next budget committee meeting. I would, I would like the counselors present to consider us having a budget committee meeting on Tuesday, the 25th of October at four in the afternoon. If that is not convenient to any one of you, let's nail down a time and date that we can do it, because we do need to do our first quarterly review of the first quarter of the budget here.
Tim, you said on the 25th of October, at what time?
Yes, four o'clock in the afternoon.
I'm gonna be late for that, I've got an eye, my two-year eye exam, about 2:30 in North Bend.
Two.
3:30, 4:30, or five, maybe, I could do that.
Counselors? Five o'clock.
Aye.
Five, aye. Counselor Mallon, five o'clock okay with you?
Is it four or five?
Five.
Five, Sheldon needs the extra time for an alibi appointment so he can see the light.
Five is five, now I can, I can understand being to see the light.
Yes, we all can. Okay, five o'clock, October 25th, here at the council chambers, we'll have our budget committee meeting. Jamie, would you make sure the other members of the budget committee are on the mic?
Certainly will, thank you.
Request from city resident prohibiting installation of high-density LED street lights. Jamie?
In your packet, there's a copy of the email we received from a resident expressing concern about the medical issues that have recently been tied to the exposure of LED, high-density LED lighting. I indicated in our reply email that we do not have LED lighting in Dune City at all right now, and that as far as I know, there was no move to change over to LED lighting until, excuse me, they work out some of the kinks they have. The LED lighting allows moisture in, and it doesn't work well in this area because they rust out so quickly. So, I let her know that, but the question that came out in my mind is that, alright, that's high-density, I mean, it was specifically saying high-density, what about something a little bit lower off the list? Because our, our street light bill, as you know, is well over seventeen thousand dollars a year, and they say that the LED lighting could possibly cut that anyhow. And that's quite an incentive, but not if it's gonna make people sick, so.
The question would arise that this is high, high-intensity LED lighting, are there options for low-density that can provide a savings to the city and provide the light and not cause people these issues?
I did think this isn't for the input, and that we will file it in a place that we can get to it again, if and when the decision ever comes up.
This might be something for the budget committee to kick around and just put on their radar string. Is there any other discussion we need on this agenda, gentlemen? Mr. Mallon, any comment?
Uh, no, it looks like there is an alternative, you go to a little lower level rating, but gee, we don't have any, you know, in the city. It's, it's kind of premature.
Yep. Okay, we'll just let this item sit with no action, and we'll just wait until we get some options and we look at it, if that's what happens in the future. Is that okay with everyone? Alright, let's move on. Acquisition of property, discussion of action items. I think, is this where we need to go to the executive?
Yes.
Alright, our executive session, okay. I am going to call the executive session pursuant to RS 192.660 (2) (E) (to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the government body to negotiate real property transactions. I will now adjourn this regular session of the Dune City Council to go into executive session till pursuant to RS 192.660 (2) (I). There were no decisions made.
I didn't know if you wanted to make that a formal decision.
No, there were, well. Okay, I will entertain a motion to authorize the city administrator and councilor Wells to act as agents for Dune City to negotiate a possible purchase of real property on behalf of Dune City, and report back to city council for approval prior to the consummation of any negotiations or transaction.
Hello?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. The city administrator and councilor Wells will act as agents for Dune City to negotiate and discuss the terms of possible purchase of real property on behalf of Dune City, and report back to the city council for approval prior to the consummation of any negotiations Okay, public hearings. None. Unfinished old business. Ordinance number 240 regarding the humane killing of crippled or helpless wildlife. Jamie?
Yes, as directed, I did speak with Lieutenant David Gifford of the State Police Department, Gang Warden Division, and expressed the concerns that had been expressed at the last meeting about, alright, well, what about communicating to the officer, you know, how do you keep, I said, what happens if you dispatch the thing, and according to the code, and you're getting ready to dispatch it, and somebody stops you? And he said, well, the thing to do would be to have them call. They just need to call and the state police and say, this is what I've done, and before you start, go to dispose of the carcass. And that's all, he said that that would work. So I took the liberty of rewording the ordinance to make it more general, has nothing to do with the code enforcement officer, really. It just adds an exception to our code allowing for the humane euthanization, and directs them that they must immediately notify the local office of State Fish and Wildlife Department, and it doesn't matter, it could be any, any one of those agencies that they notify, because those agencies will then contact the people that need to be notified, so.
Our code prohibits hunting or trapping wildlife, and state law allows for the humane euthanizing of injured animals.
That's correct.
I still don't see the reason to have our code exempt in our code what already exists in state law. I'll leave this open to discussion for the counselors.
I have no problem with this, the way it's written, I know it might be kind of redundant with states, but I think this maybe wraps it up, puts a little bit tighter feel around it, if someone actually does run against that problem, and we've got it down and writing, okay, this is what we do, and we have the exception, and I think it just tightens it up a little bit better.
Anyone else? Okay, is there any motion in regards to this ordinance number 240 at this point?
I would move that we vote to adopt ordinance 240 as written.
I'll second it.
Point of order.
I don't think we can do that.
You have to have second reading first.
Do we only have to have a first reading too?
We already did the first reading.
No kidding.
There's a script in here.
Not a good actor. Okay, let's go here, I'll read off the script. The public hearing on this ordinance having been closed at the last city council meeting on September 8th, 2016, this ordinance is now before us on second reading and language consideration. City Administrator Wells, will you please inform the counselors as to what has taken place in language of this ordinance since our last meeting that you have not yet disclosed?
There's nothing more than I know already said.
Okay, I will now entertain a motion and a second reading ordinance 240, as amended by title only, and that, I understand that would be your motion?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Upon the motion being seconded and passed unanimously, I will do the second reading of ordinance 240 as amended by title only, and the ordinance amending Title 13, Section 1301, excuse me, 130.01 of the Dune City Code of Ordinances entitled "General Offenses" and Quote by it, adding a new paragraph, parentheses C, and parentheses regarding safety and remained killing of crippled or helpless wildlife, and other matters relating thereto. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the wording for ordinance 240 as amended, and to adopt and pass ordinance 240 as presented this evening.
I would make that motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote?
Certainly. Counselor Sheldon Meyer.
Yes.
Counselor Duke Wells.
Aye.
Counselor Ed Scarborough.
Yes.
Counselor Tom Mallon.
Aye.
Counselor Ken Platt.
Yes.
And Counselor, Council President Maury Sanders.
I can't vote.
Oh, that's right, because you're in the acting as the mayor.
The motion, it passes unanimously, ordinance 240 is hereby adopted, will become effective Since we're through ordaining for the meeting. Update on state funding for septic repairs, shall we?
Well, you have in your packet, the completed program, and how activated they awarded the grant to the Craft 3, and are gonna be sending out more information as soon as they have that all figured out, but it looks like it's, you know, everything looks good.
So this firm that has taken over, they've got awarded the contract, everyone said people would make application.
And they're gonna be finalizing their process and getting that out to us as soon as possible. I'm in touch with Senator Roblin's office, so as soon as I get anything from them, pass it on to you.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else?
I had heard about this, actually on the news, I listened to what the broadcast stated, that with a quarter million dollars into the general fund to support this, to fund this, and the idea being that they loan money out to individual families, and then they repay them back, so it's a revolving fund.
Right.
And it just help generate.
Right. They started with 250,000, I think, and then Senator Roblin said he'd like to get it up to a million, and then, you know, the next legislature or some, some can be a revolving fund, that just, you know, as they pay it back, and they help people out.
When do you think you'd be able to report back on further developments in this?
Well, hopefully, I'm not gonna be here at the November meeting, but hopefully by December.
Why don't we go ahead and just put this on the December agenda, for Sheldon to give an update on. Alright, I have 11C, possible creation of a local improvement district for Silcoo's groundwater use areas, Jamie?
Pursuant to the instructions of the last city council meeting, I did some further investigation on the process, and what's involved, and how do they work, and wrote a memo, sent it to the attorney's office for review, and they sent this provision back, this is directly from our city council, this is what a local improvement district is, and this is how they are formed, and what their powers are, and what your powers as a council are. Before we get much further, I need to disclose for the record that I would be a beneficiary in the event a local improvement district was created to assist with the South Coast Water District improvements, and so I am going to use every effort I possibly can to not influence in any way. If you feel like I start overstepping those bounds, I ask that you please correct me, but I'm gonna try and, and stay out of it and leave it to you. There is no rushing this issue, so if you'd like to take this memo and kind of chew on it a little bit more, and put it on the future agenda.
I would, I would suggest probably the December meeting or January meeting. This is something I think the new council would best.
I agree.
Is resolved, if you will.
I agree.
Yes, Sheldon, you look like you want to say something.
Uh, well, I wanna ask a question, I guess. Have we thought about exploring the possibilities of wells, of having people do some wells? I'm not a geologist, but I had a whole lot of geology in my background, and as porous as the land is that we're sitting on, my prediction is that there's probably enough leakage from Wohin Lake into the surrounding ground, groundwater is a real, real thing, that there's probably enough water there for people to have their own wells.
I don't know that it's been investigated, I know that, I can only speak from my experience and my welling. We had, we drilled a well first, and it collapsed, the water went bad, but that may be because of the proximity to the lake.
Yeah, it might be too close.
And, and I do know that there are wells that are working just fine.
Yeah.
Up, up the top of the hill, and that are not members of the South Coast Water District, so.
Well, I have a well, and never gone dry, and there are no better facilities than that.
I don't know of any, but, I know that there are people on Silcoos who have not only a Silcoos water right, but a well, they have both. They don't use their well currently, it's capped, but it's there in case, and these are old timers, old timers that kind of saw that there might be a problem in the future, or were here before the dam was put in, and knows what it was like before the dam was here. And, so there are those who do have a double source on their property, even though they can only use one at a time. So, you know, maybe the answer is to hold a meeting with, to hold a meeting with the people who are affected, and see what they think.
And it seems like we probably need to investigate with fish and wildlife a little bit more too, because we're already sending thousands of gallons of water from Wohin into Silcoos, over and over and over, every single day, it seems like that would be another likely source of tapping into water without taking more out of the water already.
Well, there have been water rights issued on Wohin Creek, always I'm positive about that, but there have been, there are water rights issued on, from Wohin Creek, service water rights. But I don't know whether to, to try and do any math to try and figure it out. There are a number of options, and then the question becomes, what, if anything, does the council want to do, what, if anything, do the people want to do? This was just, the local improvement district idea was just a suggestion from the governor's office and the regional solutions team.
I think personally that the affected citizens should be brought together for maybe a work study with the new council, and let their voices be heard, since they would be the ones footing the bill on any type of district that would be formed, if that's what they want to do, maybe they could explore other options. I think information is key here, and communication of it clearly uncovered through elected officials filtering, it might be best to hear straight from the horse's mouth, what they want. And again, I think it's, the new council should be in a position to listen to it. Ed, Kim?
I agree.
I agree.
Sheldon? Tom?
Tom?
I, I agree with basically whatever wants to say. I, it is my understanding that the cost of this would be by real estate tax, real estate tax, without the.
No.
Okay.
No, it, what a local improvement district is, is the improvements, the council determines what the improvements, estimates what the improvements will be, and declares, identifies the parcels that will have to repay, and the manner in which they repay. It can't be done in, in more than five years without extensions and other stuff like that, but.
Parcels that repay are, are only those?
That reap the benefit, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Alright, I'd like to go ahead and just table this until the January meeting for the new council to take under consideration. Absent any objection. Alright, item 11D, Silcoo's dam portage license renewal, our favorite topics.
Yes, it has reared its ugly head again.
Yeah, already.
We have gotten now a verbal demand, actually was a very insistent request, from a guy who's retiring anyway, that we do something, and it's either renew the thing for the 350 bucks, or whatever it is, or go in and completely take all of it out.
Is there a third option?
No.
We can't, we can't close it off to the public and say nobody uses it?
No, we have to remit it, return it to the original natural condition. Which is going to cost way more than 350 dollars.
I, I have a real problem with this. Last week, I, I made two trips in kayak, once before the dam was open, and then the day after the dam was open, I was just going to check and see what the fish situation was. It, it's not, it's not bad kayaking that area when the dam's closed. The state, or the county, or whoever is in charge, I assume DSL is in charge of the safety of that waterway. They tout it as a, you know, canoe trail, the lake to the ocean, it is in such bad shape. The second time we went, my wife went with me, and the water was flowing, it wasn't terrible, I've been on it, but it flowed faster than that, but coming back down, below the dam, there was a spot where a very large spruce has fallen in, and someone, a private citizen, went down last year, I think, with a chainsaw, and kind of whacked things out. But, in the meantime, another log has come down, and it's starting to make a log jam there, and it was hung up on the snag that was there. The previous day, when there was, the water was up and the dam wasn't flowing, it was fairly easy to go all the way over to the edge, and kind of pull your way through with what the snags were at, and you were scraping bottom, but going back down the second day, when the, the flow was moving, both of us got hung up, and I would not recommend anyone to take an inexperienced kayaker or children down that, it's, it's a safety concern. And so, I read this, and I understand, you know, his, his one-sentence answer to you here, he's leaving, this goes in his file, he did his job, but until they want to address the safety of what happens below that dam, I, I think this is ridiculous, because taking the, the walkway that we repaired, that we repaired out, wouldn't be that big of a deal, but when they start demanding that you take out the, the footing and the ramp, that's all connected to the dam structure. I mean, it's, well, the walkway comes through there in the concrete, where you go up on the ladder to go up on top of the dam, that's all one piece in there.
Now, that's part of the dam. There is a piling that is, that was added, almost like a teeter totter, and that's what he's talking about, that big thing that's holding the portage itself, would have to come out.
But it's connected to the dam, that's what I'm saying, and.
But it isn't.
It all holds the water back, though, so I'm not sure what they're talking about taking out, but I, I would think if they would, the DSL would want, if, if Dune City doesn't want to continue our agreement with them, that they would be searching for someone to take that over. And, and with this man leaving, we're gonna be back to square one, because tomorrow's his last day, apparently. I, I, I for one don't want to see Dune City, I won't vote for putting Dune City into another long-term agreement for that, because it's outside of our jurisdiction, and I think it's just a problem waiting to happen. So I, I don't have any answers, other than maybe put that in the file too, and just wait and see what happens. Have you, have you talked to our legal counsel about this?
No, I haven't.
I, I wonder if, I mean, the state cannot force us to renegotiate, or to re-sign the agreement, and I'm just wondering what the legality is, is holding Dune City to a 15-year-old agreement that, that they don't want to sit down and negotiate over.
I see a separate issue, Counselor Scarborough, just as important as what you just brought up, it's supposed to be a navigable, a navigated, navigable waterway, and from what I'm hearing from you, it is not.
It's dangerous.
So, who is responsible to keep that waterway clear? I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't endorse like it, in, in going into agreement unless all the partners are pulling their weight on this thing. And I would even go to, even suggest, why not get our city engineer to go out there, maybe even with Mr. Palmer, see what it would cost to remove that stuff like they want? If they, if they give us a figure, let's find out what it is. Find out what it would take. If we need to move a bulldozer in there and damage the, damage the area, which is contrary to what they want, but what will they have to do to accommodate what they're demanding of us, then they got a choice to make, just my opinion. And I sense from this email, this is, this is the way the state is pushing back by someone who is indifferent.
Yeah, he's gone tomorrow, and he's just basically, he's gonna put that in his file, and he's.
Can we go back to DSL, whoever's taking this person's place, or his boss, and kind of take the tact? I want to make sure I understand that this is what is being said, that this is what is being demanded of us, or asked of us, or however your own eloquence you can do.
I could do that, and include the drawings of what's there, and ask, what parts are you talking about taking? you talking about taking out?
Right, and then get an idea what it would cost to do it, because I know it would damage the area to go in there and remove it with the... So, to save the area, they want us to destroy it.
Exactly. And we have to restore it.
And that's not palatable either. So what does the council want to do on this?
I think we need to direct a city administrator to go forward with contacting the next person that's gonna be in this department, and find out exactly what it is that they want to do, and then follow up with having our people out there look at it and give us a bit what they think it is to take it out. And also, at the same time, having bring up what Ed was talking about, the unsafe water portions of the Silkus River that are not safe and navigable. Who's responsible for that? And if they're responsible for it, they need to keep up their end of the...
Why have the portage if...
Why have it?
If you can't navigate it?
Yeah.
Is that pretty succinct?
And then there's Winston, that's a...
In a way. There, there's just upriver from the old picnic grounds, there's a big fir tree that's at a 45-degree angle right now, because the bank is being beaten out, and before the end of the winter, I can guarantee you, that one is also going to be down in the river. But the big thing is that I was noticing, and I tried to move it out of the way and I couldn't, I, I wasn't gonna take the chance of capsizing, but, well, that big spruce snag is down, and there's probably a 10 or 12-inch circumference, or diameter, log that has flown down, and it's making a log dam. And if we're getting more stuff coming down now, that's gonna become like a beaver dam. And if that, if that plug is up, you're gonna get a lot of water upstream, you know, and it's, it's gonna rise, it's not gonna let it out, or it's gonna change directions and it's gonna do some more damage. But I would think that someone from the DSL would want to come down and take a look at that portage before they start making demands. I don't think they know what they're talking about.
Kim?
Who, who's supposed to keep it clean?
The waterway?
Right.
Not us.
Who gets sued, somewhere gets hurt?
I don't know.
I always thought it was the fort, but I didn't know that.
I can say it's certainly not the city of Dune City. And that's all I care about. Tom, any comments?
Well, just one, I, I think the bottom line is, we don't want to be incurring any more liability for people getting injured down there. And whatever we do, I think we need to have that in mind first. And if that means removing some stuff, then I go along with trying to give a price on what that's gonna run.
Okay. Uh, Jamie, do you have sufficient direction from...
I believe so, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on this, Sheldon? Mayor's report. Our mayor, Leckarini, became ill, and, uh, on Monday, she had surgery. The surgery went very well, she's recovering. In fact, she should be home probably about now. And because things went really well, I anticipate her being back in the saddle, so to speak, fairly quickly. For those that believe, I know she appreciated the prayers, those that gave good thoughts and supportive comments to her and her family, she also appreciated that. I have nothing to report as a mayor's report. Surgery was kind of a surprise. So, uh, we'll move to community center report, Duell.
Everything's going smoothly here. Uh, one thing I would like to say, walking around the building the other day, seeing that gen rack sitting there, and then having this weather that's on right now is kind of a nice feeling. I'm glad we got that there.
Now, we could only get propane in the tanks.
Yeah.
Dugle, Dan, can pick up trouble a little while you're on. Okay, site review report, Kim Platt.
Uh, I have nothing to report on that, but I do want to take a second and thank you guys for being so patient with me. I really appreciate it, uh, it really meant a lot, and thank you.
We're glad to see you back.
Yeah, glad to be back.
Water quality report, Sheldon.
Uh, I went out with the, the water testers, fascinating experience, and this next time, they're gonna be taking out one of the two that signed up, that said they wanted to at our expo, to see what that's all about. It's a very, very thorough process, very interesting process. We also brainstormed through some ideas, and I've approached one of the science teachers at the, the high school here to see if, uh, they would like to maybe have a, a student or two have some real-life lab experience, and, uh, help us with the water testing in months to come. And her name is Mary Dodson, and, uh, she said that after the first of the year is when she's teaching two specific classes that would really be part and parcel to what I had in mind to, to have the kids do, and, and so I think we're gonna, uh, offer that, and maybe, if that works out, maybe see if Lane Community College has some students that they might want to have involved in that sort of stuff too. I think it'd just be an incredibly good learning experience in a, in a real-life situation for them. So, and our water's cleared up, it looks like it's almost turned over this year, so I think we're, again, we're gonna get...
Good, thank you. Planning Commission, your report.
The report is in your packet, it's pretty short, it's just a summary of the activities the planning commission has done over the last several months to, um, draw citizen involvement, and that primarily is around the public hearings and coming up a CAC.
Jamie, I want you to give the public works report, emergency services report, and your city administrator report.
Public works report, work continues on Levitt Loop. Russell Road has now been swept and brushed, and the trees trimmed, and the edges have been gravelled, the culverts have been cleaned out, um, and Rio Road repairs have been made. And they're just repairs, we're not repaving, we're just doing repairs on Rio. We have successfully contacted Mrs. Ellis, and she has agreed to allow the work to be done, and we have now ordered the products necessary to do the work, so that project is moving forward. That's pretty much the rest of the report. We did order a dead inside for the, for Rio Road, because it was pretty, pretty pale. And of course, not a lot can, can take place right away, but he's going to try and get as much done between storms as he possibly can. Emergency services report, I attended the Westlake Emergency Operations Group meeting on the 19th. Um, we, the Florence Emergency Expo will be held on November 5th at the Florence Events Center. They've got some really neat people, one of the guys, the Mike Hawk, or Mark Hawk, who has a prepping, prepping show on, uh, on the Travel Channel, I believe it is, will be there, and he'll be one of the presenters, one of the speakers. I mean, there's some exciting things going on. You might know more. Anyway, and so I'm encouraging everybody to attend, that, that sound like it's gonna be a lot, a lot of fun, very informative. Many of the members are pursuing grant proposals for various reasons. The National Guard will hold a convoy event at the Florence Events Center on Sunday, October 23rd, from 10 to 2:00. And the purpose will be to identify routes to get to Florence for the purpose of bringing supplies, et cetera, in the case of an emergency. So, that tells me that the National Guard is now stepping up to the plate as well, to have their emergency plan in place on how they're going to make things work, and how about the best they can do for us. Fire Department's been really busy with a whole lot of fires, and reminds everybody that there was, we were still under a no burn order. I think it has been lifted, I'm not, it hasn't been lifted yet?
Saturday.
Saturday, okay. It's lifted really soon, a lot of people don't understand.
Until Saturday.
Fifteen, fifteen half a foot of rain.
If they can get it to burn, more power to it, right?
Yeah, it'll burn tomorrow, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
And we had six permits issued, but no, no, almost this month. Mr. Ziegler's been sworn in for the planning commission. Septic letters continue to go out at the rate of 10 per week. We are really getting that number of mountains down, and it's much more palatable for people the way it reads now. Everybody's like, I, I'm not getting any complaints, other than I can't afford it right now, so I'm anxious to see the funding become available. Uh, Mr. Wabi is, has done a survey for the back, for the encroachment issue, however, Mrs. Diamond showed up and said that they've changed their mind. Um, I'm going to, if it's all right with you, I would like to go ahead and get the legal descriptions done, so that I have them, and the holdup, I think, will go away. She had a conversation with another neighbor, as you'll recall, at one point in time, we were talking about doing a three-way transaction with Mr. Jackson, she ran into Mr. Jackson and talked to him, and it kind of blew our deal completely out of the water, but I, and she's now, and now she says it's in Mr. Jackson's court, so we'll see what happens. In the meantime, I want to be ready to count, should it come back. Blair Bronson, I spoke with Blair about the upcoming fifth annual triathlon and duathlon, and sponsorships he indicates will be up the same. We should be getting the new packets to go start getting sponsors in the very near future. Today, Susan Duffett, the Region 15 Water Master, and I spoke to the Realtors Association regarding Dune City's septic ordinance, the shared domestic water supply, our newsletters, our interested parties list, all the things. It was great to talk to the group, very interested group of people, and they're gonna help us get the information we need, because we don't have any way to be told when properties change ownership, unless they let us know, and in exchange, we'll be helping them get the information they need. So, it's gonna be a really good deal, I think. Worked out really, yeah, very well. No follow-up yet on Lane County Parks and Reg regarding animal control. Jeff Terp did contact me, and said that, um, the Silkus Lake Club undeveloped roadway issue will be on the County Commission agenda for October 18th. He did confirm that today. Did we lose Tom?
It's Tom that's been trying to go.
Oh, is that what it was? Okay.
Let the recorder reflect it.
That Tom is calling back.
We got Tom back on here.
Hi, Tom. Tom, can you hear me now? Tom?
Let's just continue.
My guess is phone lines are going somewhere.
We'll just continue.
And that's all I have to report.
Okay. Any questions for the city administrator?
No.
Okay, go to the order, oh, I guess not. Jamie?
There was one thing that you had asked me to follow up on, with regard to the local improvement district question, and that is, why, why can't he charge more? And it is restricted. The Public Utilities Commission will not allow him to charge more than $36 a year per household, as the basic. He can then charge more on conservation for people who use more water after a certain amount. But basically, he can't charge more than $36 a year.
Is that in the statute?
Uh, oh, we are.
So it's an administrative rule?
Administrative rule.
So that's subject to the political will?
Well, I have already contacted the governor's office.
Thank you. Go to the order, Kim.
Well, next time we meet, we'll have a new president.
I think we'll have a new president-elect.
Yeah. We don't have to listen to this garbage, no more.
Didn't want to look that new to me.
TV door, turn it on.
Councilor Scarborough, go to the order.
I have nothing. Councilor Wells, uh, registered to vote, if you registered to vote, get out and vote.
Do it twice.
Yeah. Often.
Councilor Meyer.
Yes, I would like to express my thank you to Mark for the wonderful article about how much junk people are putting in our lake, our water supply and drinking source. And I had checked with some of the counselors before we got started, and would like to ask Jamie to write a nice letter to, uh, the, the guy in charge of, of the dive group for adopting Woehink Lake as sort of a, akin to adopt a highway program. I think it's just a marvelous, marvelous effort that they put forth. 3,100 pounds of debris...
Wow.
From the bottom of our drinking lake.
Was that right by the old pass? Does it ever came from?
Mark, you... They started, I went out about 7:30, Saturday morning, 8 o'clock, something like that, and they started by the bridge, they went out, and they mapped where everything was. So they took it mostly by the bridge, and they think that a lot of it was brought there by just people pulling up to where the boat ramp is there, and just dumping stuff off the back. And they've, they've also, 3,100 pounds, and that was for one day. They think if they came back more regularly, they could get more stuff. So I'm glad, thank you for the acknowledgement, it was a, it was a great story, and they really want to continue to do that and increase the areas that they cover, because they found so much stuff in that particular area. It leads them to believe that there's probably a lot of stuff around that they didn't get to. Thank you.
So what would you, Sheldon, if you wanted to have a letter?
I'd like to have a, a thank you letter from Dune City, and maybe all of assignment, or, you know, you could put all of our names on it as counselors, and say thank you for, you know, the efforts that you're doing to, uh, help us keep Woehink a drinkable water supply.
My second thought, I think it's a great idea.
I think the consensus is in support of that. Jamie, would you take care of that over the next couple?
Certainly will.
All right, anything else for the good of order? Jamie, Rapunzel?
No.
All right. I have nothing, so, seeing that it's 16 minutes after 8:00 in the evening on a rainy, blustery evening, I'll entertain wanting to adjourn.
So move, second.
Move second, a favor, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Hey, we're adjourned.